The United States of America. A truly public for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, whatever deed and justice for all.
Want to remind everybody to turn the phones to silence. Uh, is there any additions or additions to the agenda?
No, Matt and Jerry, I don't have it.
Then I would consider an motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion, I'll second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Visitor comments?
Um, I have concerns about the class sizes that are going on in third grade with my daughter's size, um, right now. She is at twenty-seven in one class. Um, looking at a lot of those state statutes right now, that right now, that the revenue must be reduced and maintain district average class size in kindergarten grade three to the level of seventeen on average in each and respective grades. Looking at this is that there is being revenue being placed in to classroom sizes, having a daycare in involved in a classroom setting, which should not be doing that when we're looking at a class sizes in the grade level of three. Um, that we should be looking at space size. Um, a special classroom, that it should be put into, um, a classroom setting versus a daycare setting. Especially as tax barrier, that a daycare should not be utilized in a classroom setting. So, that really needs to be looked at and changed, I think, immediately. Uh, or very, very highly considered or looking into other options of into something else. Otherwise, if you need to look into, uh, more classroom teachers because you can't consider having, um, looking at this in here, you cannot have a classroom teacher. A classroom teacher actually has to be licensed by a professional educator license and standards boards. Um, but you cannot have that also, that means it cannot be an E-aid. It actually has to be a professional teacher. So, I believe, I don't know if you guys want copies of this at all. I'm sure you guys probably know the statutes.
I will to Mike if you'd like. Uh, the only thing I was going to say is that we have been discussing this and I believe tonight, we're planning on looking at setting a work session to discuss class size numbers and with, um, all the board members to, um, make sure that we're all on the same page and agree to numbers. I believe that's our plan.
And I think we should take the copy of what you're referring to, so we are all on the same page.
Absolutely, and I do have multiple copies too if needed, but like I said, I mean, this is the most recent that I found of the main association, so it's the twenty-one. But I just want to make sure that we are being proactive, especially since Pilgrimage is promoting that the smaller class sizes, and if we are really looking at smaller class sizes, K through three, and we're looking at third grader at twenty-seven in, I don't know what the other class size is, but my daughter's class size, it's twenty-seven, and that's in Miss Crossus class. I don't know what the other class size is, but that's, that's significant.
We do have a, uh, I don't know if we have an official policy, but we have it written down about class sizes for our goals for K through four.
K through the half for a hundred.
Yeah.
Yep. And it's actually, I believe, at the number that we.
It's our recommendations, all the recommendations that we set previously.
But that's why we're also relooking at it, because as of right now, it is at the number that we recommended in the past. So, we're, that's why we want to relook at it, to see if it's still fitting the goals that we have.
This isn't a new issue, we run on class sizes every single year.
Yeah, obviously, I mean.
This is something that we need, that's, we need to go back.
I'm just wanting, you know, I want to advocate for my child as soon as every other child that is in that grade level too, especially when they're getting older, especially when we're dealing with it. Are they getting the assistance that they need for their children, are they getting twenty-seven kids? If one disrupts the classroom, how are they, how is that one disrupting that whole classroom? How are they bringing it back together? I mean, I know, I know it is going to happen, whether you have fifteen kids, twenty-seven kids, but I think it's easier to bring them back together versus letting them continue to go and twenty-seven kids to one teacher. I mean, that's insane, especially when we're allowing a daycare being, uh, being and taking a classroom setting. That is, I, I find that disheartening as, as, as a taxpayer, as a, my kid is in school, but let's just bring them in more and let's take a classroom away from that should be utilizing. If it's not going to be a third grade, what's, what's the class size in second grade? What's the class size in first grade? Why is this happening?
Did you fill out a card with your name and stuff where we could get any answers to? Did you say your name and some sort of?
I'm Jacqueline Broughton, by the way. Well, is there a card that it should be?
There's a little slipper here.
Uh, I would like to ask just a couple of questions before we go out to the rest of the meeting. Um, one, uh, what would your recommendation of class sizes? Would, just out of my curiosity, what would you like to see for a number?
I would really like them to see decreased down to at least a twenty number. I do think that's a little bit more.
And every year going forward then, or?
You know, it's, it's showing that especially K through three, you need a smaller class size for sure to build the foundations that are needed in there. As they grow older, they become more independent learners. Um, they can be able to go with a higher class size, you know, then you're looking into like the twenty-fives, twenty-sevens.
Twenty in third, in third, what are you thinking in like fourth?
Twenty, uh, you know, you can look at like that twenty-five, twenty-seven, because as they get older, they're, they can be more independent. You know, their, their foundations are being built upon that, to learn that more independence upon it. But if they cannot learn that when they are younger, I mean, where, what do they have for a foundation? That's what those K first, second, and third grades are for, to build that foundation that's needed. And if they don't have that foundation, how can you build a good structure to promote what they promote middle schools to make them, you know, um, at middle school, they, they, they promote that whole thing to be, being the good leaderships they are, the respected people, getting them ready for their careers that is coming up, and it shows, but you need that.
Thank you very much for coming, and I would invite you to come back to meetings. And also, we have a district leadership team, and we'd love to see you join that also to help us guide this going forward. So, thank you so much for coming. Any other visitor comments? Uh, consider the consent agenda. We have the meeting minutes from the previous month's meeting, monthly capital including investments, the bills that we paid this month, the bills we paid in activities accounts, uh, donations. I don't have a sheet on the donations, there were no donations this month, and personnel summary sheet. Uh, is there a motion on?
I'll make that motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion passed. Special boards report reports with possible action. Personnel did not meet, is there anything you have, Mike?
I do not, other than we will have a meeting between here and the next board meeting.
Okay, perfect. Activities?
Did not meet.
And we'll have a meeting scheduled between here and next two months for that committee.
Curriculum?
We did not meet, but, uh.
Do you have a report?
I have a report.
Um, so you have the one-page report, uh, which has the district leadership, and then so the three bullet points that are there, I'm just going to do all of the same report, okay? Um, so just some highlights, workshop week, obviously, school's back up and running and kind of as we're getting going through the year. From workshop week, some highlights to that. Um, we go deeper into our reading analysis with our elementary, so looking at how do we use the data we have collecting and making sure we're using that to better our instruction. Um, we had an admin refresher, engagement strategies, we looked at career experiences. What are the experiences that we can get, um, for kids in the building? And so we had our career consultant come and present and work with teachers about what they could do in the classroom as well. So, some highlights there. The other one is that we had the opportunity to do vertical teams. And so looking at K-12, you know, with COVID and everybody spreading out, and, and some of it was done online, but that opportunity to bring everybody back together in terms of looking at ELA K-12, looking at mathematics K-12. So, trying to do some more of those opportunities. Um, we did Alice training, which is the active shooter training. Last year, we did a partial training to that, kind of as a refresher, this year we did a full training. So, we did that for both elementary and secondary. In addition to that, we also did a session on the importance of a relationship. And so we looked and did some strategies for how do we build those relationships right away at the end of the year? And how do we track that over the course of the year that we're, we're building those? So, that'll be an ongoing series that we do each PD day throughout the year. And then the other one is our continued exploration into modern learning. Um, and over the summer and from last spring, looking at our instructional framework and, and what is this driving us towards? How do we make sure that we are creating an environment that is 21st century for kids, it's going to match careers, it's going to give them opportunities in careers or experiences that they're interested in, and then also serve the community? What are the, what are the opportunities and the needs within the community in terms of careers? And so we did a little bit more preview to that within workshop week, and we did, um, over the summer, the admin team and some teachers put together kind of a draft instructional framework that is kind of a pathway for moving us forward. And so we talked a little bit more about that. Number two on there is the teacher mentor program. Um, that was one of our goals last year, and that is up and running. And so all of our new teachers have a mentor, and we have some second-year teachers that requested to have a mentor. That was part of our program. Um, and so anecdotally, we've got a lot of good feedback. People are excited to have that person to go to, to ask questions, and then with the mentors kind of working through, how can you help this new teacher along as well? So, we'll update for that. Number three is the other handout. All right, and so this is the, uh, from the district leadership team, kind of two things, so number three and four. Um, the first one was looking at our data from last year, and so looking at our goals that we had from last year, and then setting those new goals for this year. So, we did that at the district leadership team, the admin team also then took that information to draft those goals for tonight. Um, so what I have here on this landscaped document is you have the goal area, okay? So, that aligns to World's Best Workforce, the goal, and then what's the data resources we're using to track that information over the course of the year? And then some of the strategies that we're using to meet that goal this year. So, um, the first area in terms of school readiness, um, we continue to use the TS goal, which is the data collection tool used at Urban Shopper. Um, we want to expand that further and look more at literacy and some of those pieces, but we need to collect some more information, more data before we do that. So, that goal is very similar to the year before. We did increase it to ninety percent, um, so have to hit that ninety percent of their, their plan. Um, we did meet the goal last year, so we had a hundred percent of students get eighty percent or more on their, um, area, their ESEPs in particular. The read well by third grade, so they, the all students will read by third grade. Um, we added to this, some of the information that we talked about at the district leadership team was, we really are tracking second and third grade because we have data for second and third grade, but we have tons of data for kindergarten and first grade as well. And so how do we make sure that we're on track?
Which is a new thing compared to where we were before.
Right, exactly. So, we kept our second and third using STAR data, and then what's highlighted there is we added, looking at our literacy data and made it a goal for us as well. So, for kindergarten and first grade, looking at where our literacy data is and making sure that we're tracking that, and then we're making progress towards that third grade. And then you can see the previous goal, I did put in bold then at the bottom, we had forty-one, seven percent of students do, uh, jump in benchmark. So, we, that goal was twenty-five percent, we had a huge number of kids move last year. Uh, the third area is that close the achievement gap piece, and I have it separated, it's unfortunately printed on both sides, so it's into two parts.
What's the difference between these highlighted ones and what's?
The highlighted ones were ones that we added. So, previously to last year, we had one goal in that area, we added two others so that we specifically looked at kindergarten, we specifically looked at first grade. The close the achievement gap, um, we're looking at some similar data, but we weren't, we want to make that comparison piece. Um, the gap in particular we're looking at is our students, socioeconomic. So, looking at premium reduced price versus non-premium reduced price one category, and how do we choose to close that gap? But we wanted to write the goal so that it's not only are we choosing closing the gap, but we're keeping with our progress. We're moving up at the same point. And so one of the things you'll notice in both of those goals is that last, um, statement piece, which is maintaining our non-FRP below proficiency rate, and then I put in the proficiency rate is what it, where it was. So, we want to make sure that as we're closing the gap, we're not, it's because we're lowering everything, right? But we're actually increasing everything.
Which was one of the discussions.
Which was one of the discussions that we had at the district leadership team. So, there's two parts to that, and there, so you'll see one on the first side, right? And then you'll see one on the second side, uh, between reading and data. Previously, the goal was in STAR data, we also met that goal last year. We had a goal of twenty-five percent moving a benchmark category, and we had thirty-eight point four percent of students move that. The last two that are on the backside, so it's the career and college ready categories. Um, we changed this one, this one, first one is highlighted a little bit, we have a freshman academy course. And so all of our students are starting that professional or that personalized learning plan in freshman year and getting that started right then. So, our goal previously was a hundred percent of seniors doing that. Our goal is a hundred percent of freshmen going, getting going with that. And then the other piece, the other part was to continue to track our career experiences. One of the feedback pieces we got at the district leadership team was to categorize those, those areas a little bit more. So, not just that they did a work experience, but what types did we have in there, right? So, we're looking to track more of that information as we collect it. So, is it a job shadow, was it attending the speaker series, was it internship? So that we get a little bit more data, and what was that for the student? And then the very last area was around graduation. Um, we locked that area at ten and ninety percent. Um, that is covered in the last year, it's not covered, it's not covered in the future. Due to sort of the digital conversation that we did, um, because we track students and how they go as well. So, we continue to keep that. Actually, they make software. So, if a student leaves us, they make their software, they need to account for it, you know, they go through.
My department where it happened?
Yeah. That, that only takes quite a while, so it tends to come out about six, eight months after, um, we do those. So, we kept this at ninety percent. Um, the other part that we took as well was attendance, um, and we had, we had ninety-one percent of the students. So, we really published the theme that we didn't need to change the goal. We track attendance, we need to track. So, that's what it is. So, that is our goal for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and then we'll publish that, we'll put that on the website. We're a special report as well, remember. The last part, I have a little report, which is about our last assessment of the district leadership team. And that was around transition from fourth to fifth grade. So, that's been a conversation that I know here for a long time, uh, how do you look at this and how do you ensure you do it well? And so we had a lot of the conversation around that, should we look at this, should we talk about this? Uh, and looking at, at information with assessment pieces, there was different ideas and stuff shared, and we tried. We ended that conversation, we had to ask the people about it. And so the district leadership team gave three questions that put them in there as well. But the first one in particular, you think, um, is the strategy, we're moving forward, that's what I think. We had mentioned, yes. So, overwhelmingly, the district leadership, yes. Um, you did report, you had a client that's two, like, he's connected. Um, and the last one, uh, impact possible exits, yeah, so looking at transition. If you look at that, we have an impact on that as well, you could, you could raise a little bit, a little bit more question. But definitely worth talking about.
It's going to be kind of a benefit to the district leadership committee. Well, I don't know if it's one of the committees, but I, I agree with it. We can more than change. Can't, can't approve that.
Just to clarify too, what Brian's talking about, that transition is kind of a school within a school. We don't necessarily follow the middle schools kind of open, and then the kind of, uh, over the whole room type thing, which could impact where we operate, like, if you not have all the wide of the like that we're currently doing. The basics of the conversation was to give more reading and math for time. Because you went from ninety minutes in the elementary to basically fifty minutes of each of those, and that's a big change, you know? Especially, you know, trying to get our math and your use quarters up and taking that time away, you know, it's a big step. So, the school within a school concept is you basically have to build that schedule first. If that impacts anything else, and, uh, you've got to start with that, and then you actually.
Make one comment on that scale, unfortunately.
Oh, no worries about that. Don't be honest, all we're just for common.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. No, that's okay, I had no idea.
You're sure, sure.
I will talk to you about that. Thank you.
So, we will be adding it to it, in terms of pulling groups together and, and looking at this. One of the things, the tentative schedule for the next DLT is November seventh. We may move that a little further out if we're still collecting information on that, uh, especially as we're getting in conversations around scheduling.
Notes of progress first of all.
Right. I'll play that to you.
Uh, that's the goal. All right, any questions for Ryan? All right, thank you very much.
Good job, Ryan.
Thanks.
Policy.
All right, policies that are listed, this is the second reading, and I made a motion to include the policy.
Can we, can we do it on the second now, instead of the third reading?
No, you're, no, you're not, you're not, it's just a second reading.
This is the second reading of policies listed.
We haven't got any feedback from it.
Anyway, there are no, no changes.
Thank you very much. Facilities.
Facilities, we did meet on Tuesday, September thirteenth. We had, um, we had an update on the baseball softball complex. Um, the baseball is, we're going to be looking at doing electrical and water to get to the baseball field. Um, the air line, um, the baseball will be done by the end of May because of all the grass seedlings that we need to put in and make sure it grows. So, we're not going to put any students or any athletes out on that field until the end of May. Softball complex should be up and running by the first game, so we should be good there, uh, the complex. The football field is under schedule, a little behind schedule, it's a work in progress. Hopefully, it'll be done within the next couple of weeks, so we should be good there. Um, then we had a review of the facility analysis. It will be, uh, presented at the October board meeting. Um, as of right now, we don't have any information on what the needs are going to be in it, so for the whole facilities. Um, and then we wrapped it up with snow removal plan. We got Rosinski that is actually going to do the snow removal for Pilgrims School. So, we do have someone that's out there that's, well, actually somebody that's local company and everything. So, that's pretty much all we covered.
Cool. Anything else? Uh, budget.
Budget, we met Thursday, September fifteenth, and the first thing we talked about was just the audit update that's still being worked on and soon coming. Second, uh, we talked about, kind of reviewed some of the capital budget expenses and things we're working on. Um, talked about the levy discussion and recommend, well, what did we talk about? That's one of our voting items. That's one of our action items. We have for the taxes levy, twenty-twenty-two payable, twenty-twenty-three is a one point two percent increase.
That's changed, so why don't we let Missy do her report?
Okay.
And then you can, because we had new levy run here Friday night.
Wow, we just did that like two days before this one.
Well, on Thursday.
Thursday.
But why don't we have Missy do her report? Then the two action items can be brought up at this report.
Thank you. Ooh, I like this one.
I hope it's no good number, please.
I'm not reporting if it's not. Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You can take this.
We gotta give one more.
It was a one point two.
Yes, so what we, what we reported at the budget committee was a one point two percent of change from the previous year, which would be payable this year, so what we're payable next year. Um, so, yeah, it went from a one point two to a point two. So, that is what, and that is taking the full levy, if we wanted to take the full levy. So, just a reminder for some of the new board members, we can take the full levy now, and then we can decrease it before the December third. Yep, in December, we just can't increase it.
Well, the recommendation is take the full, and we go back and get this.
Yeah, because it's hard to know without the service plan.
Even I, who usually already spoke, take the full, yeah, let's take the full. Do you want us to do that action item, or do you want?
You want to point out that debt service access one, the difference on that one?
Yes, so the debt service access goes to the bottom in red. It went from a twenty-five thousand difference this year to a hundred and seventy-eight thousand difference. So, I reached out to L-ellers to kind of inquire about that whole piece. And so when we, when they levy for our debt, we have to levy a hundred and five percent of our debt. So, they kind of account for if we don't receive all of our tax link, then we still have enough money to be able to pay our, our bonds. So, what this means is that that hundred and seventy thousand, seventy-eight thousand is going back to the taxpayers because our taxpayers are paying to us, so we give it, we have to give it back. So, that's what that is about.
And is that why, um, it went from the one point two to the two?
No, no, but those numbers didn't change. Some of the numbers that changed of cap were my LPSM changed, my operating capital, and... I think it was just those two, those are the two numbers that changed today. But if you look, I mean, we're pretty comparable to last year, so I don't expect any change from now on, for the total investment. I know, for the hours.
And for those of you that are new on the, on the right-hand side, where you see the extra state local, um, that's, they have an X in front of both of them, that levy is kicked in by state taxpayers and/or local taxpayers. So, you can see if there's an X in both columns, it's both, if there's one or the other, it's just the state or the local. So, it kind of gives you an idea of which levy is which.
So, do you want me to wait till after the rest of it, or you want to do this?
Ryan, you can make the motion now. If you have any other questions, well, you have to do the motion.
I'm going to make a motion to accept the preliminary certification of twenty-twenty-two payable, twenty-twenty-three levies.
For the full amount?
For the full amount.
I'll second. Okay, any questions, comments, or concerns? Um, is this a roll call this time? It's a roll call in December, but I don't, it's not this time.
You can do a roll call on your right, and then, doesn't matter, why don't you do a roll call?
Okay, I'm, I'll do a roll call, oh, sorry, to my left.
Aye.
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 That way, if we did it wrong, we did it right.
Yeah.
Because we can always do a roll call.
Well, I know it's a roll call in December when we set the final, but I wasn't sure if the first one is or not. I'll have to bring my cheat sheet again. All right.
Overall, that's a good, that's a good, you know, basically keeping it the same.
Yep. Anything else for budget?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we're going to, Missy now present our first revision of the twenty-two, twenty-three budget with our board room.
All right, so that's the next handout in your packet, so the first revised, revised budget here. Okay, so if you go to page four of your packet there, this is a summary of the highlights of what's changed in the budget from our June meeting to this meeting. Um, there was an adjustment to our A D Ms. And we had an adjustment in revenues due to levy, E S R, et cetera. Um, so E S R, we added that fifth section of first grade, so some of those things kind of counterbalance. So I, we did some revenues and expenses there. And then for cost increases, we had some teacher lane changes, so they can only elect to do teacher lane changes twice a year, nine-one and one-one. So those are the nine-one-ones that we are aware of. Um, some staffing changes, staffing changes would be people leaving, people replacing. Um, because historical increase was part of the, um... Which you did approve at the personnel committee. The, um...
Yes, that was that dollar rate for the, uh...
Yes.
This was, yeah.
Yep. And the next one I put in the transportation fee. That one was, when we did the budget in June, that piece didn't get factored into the, the expenses, so I just added that in, so it reflects that change. Um, so the, you can see the overall deficit down below, and it's a difference of a positive three hundred thousand from the official budget in June. So we're heading in the right direction.
Can I get a motion to accept the first revision?
No, I didn't make a motion to accept it.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't make a motion.
Right.
That's what I said, can I get a motion?
Oh, I thought you said.
Well, I think she's going through the, are you going to address this?
I can.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions, but I don't think, and we can't until there's a motion.
Right.
Oh.
Good call.
Okay, so I'll just make a motion to approve the first revision of the twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
Second.
Beautiful. Okay, my question on this page is why would a teacher choose not to change the lane?
If they're not made aware of their contract, that's the only reason they wouldn't.
Okay.
They forget the date.
Yeah, they forget the date, they miss the deadline.
Okay, they missed deadline, okay. Because otherwise, it's like, why would you not change?
The contract says they have to do it by a certain date, so we can budget it.
Okay.
Sometimes they don't realize that in the, in the country.
Beautiful, thank you.
Um, there were no changes to food service at this time, and no changes to community ed, and no changes to the building construction fund, so you're not gonna see those reflected in this packet. You're literally only gonna see the pages that are for the general fund. Some say they're irrelevant. Um, so the next page, you'll see the revenue sources split out by local, state, and federal aids, and then you can see the pie chart of how everything is allocated there. And then the following two pages, if you remember from our past budget books, they're split out by expenditures. So the first one is by program expenses, kind of giving you an idea of where the expenses are budgeted for. And then the next one is split out by the object codes. Now, the object codes on this one, the debt service and the staff development is not included in this one, so just take that in mind. So your numbers on, from the program expenses and the object expenses are not going to match because they have different information. But again, it gives you an idea of what we're paying for salaries, benefits, purchase services. So the purchase services will be our outside contracts, supplies, capital expenditures, et cetera. Any questions on the goal?
So when increase salaries, it looks like about five hundred thousand, is that how much you've got from this last year?
Are you on the program expenses or objects?
Yes, the program.
Just wanted to make sure I'm on the right side.
The object. First line.
Yeah, most of the objects, because that's the comparison.
Six point three to six point eight.
Right, yep. Um, and then you can see the middle column is what we budgeted in the official budget, the six point eight. And then from the official budget to now is the six point nine.
Always the six point nine.
Yep. Yep.
So it's about six hundred thousand in salaries.
Compared to last year.
Yeah, that's ten percent.
Right.
Any other questions on that?
And Steve, that comes from raises and then also adding staff.
Yeah.
Both places.
A lot of that is broke down here, correct?
That's my E S R update.
Oh, okay.
But so, yeah, some of it will be made.
Some of them is, yeah, not all.
Yes. Any other questions on the budget?
So when we're running a deficit this year of eight hundred seventeen thousand.
Right. If you remember, we were at one point one in June, a deficit.
Yeah. So the deficit went down.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
And we knew that we were in deficit. Borrowing money on our L T F M to do projects and stuff.
Yep.
Any other questions? Do you need to go through these before we vote on this, or is this, okay, then? Any other questions on the per provision? This we don't have to take a roll call for. Then all of us in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes, all right.
All right, okay, next on your, on the agenda is the enrollment update.
While it just still says business manager, otherwise...
Okay.
We have enrollment update down low, but you can do it here if you, you do the sheet that I was gonna hand out. This one?
Yeah.
I have that element or other, but we can, you can do it in business manager if you want, and then we can...
It's totally up to you.
You can do it, that's fine.
All right.
Yep, you can do it now.
Okay, so I did an updated, so today is day number ten, ten hard to believe that we're on day ten already, this whole year. Um, so I ran another report for our enrollment, and here you can see in the second column over, the, actually I should have changed that couple of, that actual as of today. Um, the numbers that we have in all grade levels. And then on the, let's see, the fifth, well, the fourth and the fifth columns, you can see what the numbers per sections are for the elementary grades. The highlighted ones are where we're at, if we have four or fifth section, and where we're at number-wise.
Oh, so for third grade, is every section at twenty-six or is there more than?
We might have one that's at twenty-five because somebody moved or didn't show up. Yeah.
So, but we're not at twenty-seven anymore?
The average is at twenty-six.
All right.
And then I did, there's another report that I usually call every ten days, and so from day one to today, I show a decrease of twenty-one kiddos. So now, some of those kiddos, we just didn't know at the beginning that they were going elsewhere, and some of them have dropped since day one. So we're down twenty-one kiddos, but it was only a, because we, we get paid by what they call wadons. So our high school kids weigh more than our elementary kids, so it kind of, kind of a weighted scale there. So we've only really lost about five wadons out of those twenty-one kids.
Which always amazed me because in my opinion, it costs more for the little kids because they've got old drafts or whatever.
Right.
The older kids just need a book and reuse it again.
Doesn't it break down by one, one point two, one point five, or one point two more than that?
It's one, oh, I wish I would have brought that sheet in.
One point...
I think the elementary is...
Two and one point, one point two or one point one.
One point zero.
One point zero. It's elementary, and I think it's a one point two for... What was that?
Middle school's one point two.
I think it starts in seventh grade.
Seventh grade.
Then high school's one point five.
Seven two.
I think it's one point two all the way out, they simplify it.
We're not that there was certain factors at one point five.
Used to be.
Used to be, okay. Good knowledge.
So overall, from last year to this year, there's a total on the sheet, so where are we at? Total wise?
One two four three.
Am I looking at the right sheet?
Well, yeah, because you got, this is the actual, oh, there's not a total.
Total, so what's, what's the total?
He just added.
One thousand two hundred and forty-three.
Okay, thank you. And we ended last year twelve fifteen.
What's that?
We ended last year twelve fifteen. So twenty of those are, you know, just the attrition from graduation to kindergarten. We had a smaller graduation class.
Any questions on the enrollment? Okay, so your next sheet that I have for you is the E S R funding. So this is all that remains from our E S R funding. Currently, we've already spent E S R one, E S R two, we've had C R F funding, we've had other little buckets, those are spent. Um, this is what remains. So I have three separate columns, and they're broken down by a finance code. Um, so the first finance code, we have about six hundred and ninety-one thousand that was allocated to us. The second one is a hundred and seventy-two, and the third one is thirty-four thousand. The third one is only to be spent for summer school or special learning. Um, if you look at the light blue shaded ones on the very left side, those are salary expenses that we would need to budget into the budget for next year if we wanted to carry those programs forward. Kind of separated those out. And you'll see at the bottom, that highlighted blue, that's the total for those, for those people that we would need to budget into next year's budget.
So are these like new teachers up top? I guess I'm gonna use those to like add that.
Not new, we've, they're same teachers that we had last year. It's just they're new programs that we brought in with the extra funding. So that program we bought in, bought in, we brought in access last year. Um, we brought in some interventionists, and we added the steps program, so there are additions that we, additional program that, program that we've added.
That's a lot. It's gonna get the budget next year.
Did the column on the left, did we go over this?
We didn't, not at the meeting.
Becky asked us.
Update on buckets.
Becky asked for a report, so we figured we shared.
We got it, we got it, I'm just making sure my head wasn't in the clouds. So the ones on the left are, are the ones that we are budgeting for next year, or want to budget for next year.
We will have to make that decision in the budget.
Just the blue ones.
The blue ones.
The unhighlighted ones, those are one-time expenditures, and those, those will be one and done. Um, I do have...
Two hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Yep.
Yeah. So I do have one item highlighted in yellow on the sheet, um, that is a van that we would like to purchase. We have some, we may not be able to purchase the van due to some technicalities of the van. Um, so that's why it's highlighted, because that may be coming out of the, the budget, and we'll have to factor in that forty-seven thousand somewhere else. Whether it's curriculum, um, or something, we'll have to allocate it somewhere else, so that's the reason we'll spend a van.
Well, we want to get another van.
Transport students. So what?
Do we currently have a van?
Yes, yeah. No, it just, eventually we're gonna have, you can only keep it for so long, right? So it was a way to help overall the budget, because you can use it to transport summer school students, U I F, you know, all kinds of things, so... But we may not be able to purchase it because of rules of the state.
Well, the state, did you want to get it delivered?
Uh, it's probably not worth it.
That was really helpful.
But, so that...
Can I go back to the light blue? So like these teachers on the top with the forty percent, are those like the interventionists?
Correct, yep.
And then like the two below is like one just a teacher and one's like a title teacher, I guess, like...
So the three top ones are part of our access programming.
Okay.
So sixty percent of them, we can budget, we have budgeted, and we can bill, we get reimbursed for that through the specialized funding.
It's a grant.
Yeah. The forty percent is what we have to kick in out of our budget, right? So that's why we chose that forty percent in the E S R funding for these couple of years. We did it last year, and we'll do it again this year to help offset that.
Eventually, that access grant, we will have to pay that forty percent, which is overall a good deal, because you're getting sixty percent from the state to pay those three salaries.
And how long does that grant last?
As long as you keep applying and keep showing...
I think it's every two years, we have to reapply, right?
Every two years.
So we only know, but every two years.
Right. Most of the time, most of the time, they renew the access grants as long as you're making progress and doing things that you said you would do. I haven't heard of anybody...
I've never heard of anybody that gave it.
No.
Okay.
One, three.
That would be for us to look at and say, is it making the changes that we want with the intervention people? And if not, then maybe we don't want to commit the forty percent to it. I think we saw some pretty good things last year with both positions, but...
Any questions on the E S R funding?
Uh, what's the status of the new sign? Is the state okay?
Yes.
Yes.
The status is, you know, uh, it's gonna be dangerous. And I sent emails to all our school sister and our city, because I don't like it. And I told them. And I want to pay the money. It's gonna increase access. Just write up this. Anything else from the business managers' aspect? Anything else from, from Missy? All right, and we're moving on to other crisis team focus list.
Um, I handed this out to you. I just wanted to share, uh, we did go through this as an admin team in August, uh, and updated different pieces to it. And, uh, I would share this to you of different people that are on different committees and different teams, like we have the handbook of care, um, medical and pieces like that. So, um, this has all been handed, updated, and came in handy with the issue that we had at the beginning of the school with ladies passing, that we brought everybody together on the crisis team and, and went through the handbook of what we needed to do and how we needed to handle it. So, um, something that we, hopefully you don't have to deal very often, but, uh, we did update that piece, I just wanted to share that with you. And we also have little flip cards, charges, cards that every teacher has for different, different things that might come up in the classroom that is right by their desks or whatever situation might arise, so. Just wanted to share that with you and let you know that we, you know, we, we do these things even prior to something that comes up. So we have it in place, so when something does arise, we have some information that we can follow. Cool, just wanted to share that with you. If you have any questions on it at all.
Enrollment update, we are in the car. Uh, and next, set board workshop meeting date to review class size recommendations and our open enrollment cap. Um, that doesn't have to be done, it, it can be done at a, or, uh, like before our regular board meeting, but there's a family conference that day.
Oh, in October?
In October. Um, it could be done on a different Monday, it could be done, I guess, basically throw up what dates...
You know, if we think of keeping it on a Monday night, you know, we've got the third, tenth, or, um, I'd like to have a, Ryan and I are still putting some information together. I've got different class size recommendations or what other schools in our area are at, I got that going for you, I'll have some information there. Ryan's pulling some information on data from class size, information that Becky had asked, uh, for, so we'll have some of that information for you guys at that meeting as well. Um, but, uh, anytime, I think whatever would work for the most of you, I don't know, I guess probably plan hour and a half, hour, hour and a half, probably, I'm guessing. Right, yep.
And it doesn't have to be in a formal, we have the motion.
Yeah, it's just a work session, so it works to talk through it.
Just have some fun.
Full conversations about it. So those things that happen, you shouldn't have it done before the next meeting? Anyone, do we have to stay on a Monday?
No, no, I just kind of thought Mondays would be what you guys used to, but, because you got games and...
Mondays.
I was gonna say, Monday, like, how about the tenth? Do you have much time, do you guys need to get your stuff together? We could do the third or the tenth.
Either one would work for us, or any day. I could say the week of the third or week of the tenth would be probably the best for us, give us another...
Tenth works better for me.
I think, I think that can be either.
The booster club meeting on the third.
All right. The tenth, that looks like, what time works?
Six, five-thirty.
I could make five-thirty work, so we can do it a little earlier.
I was gonna say do five-thirty, can we just have the pieces sorted?
Yeah, we can do that, we compete everywhere.
Meeting.
Five-thirty.
Sounds like a JV football game.
Uh, there is a JV football game on the tenth, Key Quot Lakes.
Yeah, Key Quot?
Yep. There is also one on the third.
Home?
That one is at home.
And they started at four thirty?
Thirty.
Do we want to go later then?
Yep, you want a later?
Yeah, we can. Nine.
Come on.
When you were.
Me, you.
Six is fine, depends on home game, I mean.
It's not home.
Everybody to the tenth, and I do seven.
Six thirty? Six thirty?
Do you want to do a different night other than Monday?
Would work better for me.
I'm good on Tuesdays.
Tuesday, Monday?
Yeah. I can't think if I have anything, so.
I don't have anything on my calendar for Tuesday.
What time?
I don't either.
About five-thirty on the eleventh, what does that look like for people?
You know what?
You can send a reminder.
We will send, so October eleventh, the five-thirty.
Where are we meeting?
Well, I would say we just meet in the district boardroom.
Okay.
If we have to go somewhere else, we can.
Five-thirty. It doesn't appear in here, is there? All right. Any other things about that?
Well, does anybody else need anything other than what I talked about? Obviously, we have our policy that I can share with you, I'll get some, uh, other information from other schools.
Sarah, so we need to schedule personnel committee, hire personnel before that.
We can, it work, I would, like at four-thirty?
I'm good all day that day. Wednesday afternoon, so I get done with my route at about three fifteen, so I'm good after.
Four-thirty, I can do it for my man.
Four-thirty?
Yep.
It's you two and.
Steve?
Steve? Can you make that one, four-thirty, and then move?
Yep.
Okay?
Beautiful. Then superintendent's report.
Um, a school readiness update. Um, I believe I put that in, did I put that in my weekly summary? Maybe it's a copy, I forgot, here it is. I can't remember now, but I made copies. Just giving you an update on school readiness info from Betty Doss. So I asked Betty just to update us on some school readiness info. Uh, we have four classes of up to eighteen children. Uh, we've had cancellations and some additions, so as of right now, they do not have a waiting list. Uh, they are serving every family who has expressed an interest for their child to attend Pillager School Readiness. Uh, during the screening last week, they gave out four registration packets, but those forms are turned in, we do not consider them on the waiting list. So, um, they do, we do have to save spots for special education children, for the three and four-year-olds, because remember, they service our special ed kids in that program. Um, so we do have to save some spots for those kids in case they show up during the year.
Is that only in district?
Special ed, yes.
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 So how does that work if somebody's out of district?
I'll take that back. Ryan?
Sorry.
Uh, special ed students since early childhood, are they just our owners at open enrolled kids as well?
Enroll and come.
If we accept them in open role, it would be.
Yeah, I was going to say.
If we accept them in open role, then they become special education, then we would have to service them, right? Yeah, sorry.
But we have to.
Right. Yep. Um, uh, let's see, we have three, three-year-olds who will need center-based programming in January, so we know we have some kids coming. Three of the children who went through early childhood screening last week scored referral scores, so the nice thing about that is when you have those assessments earlier, you get an idea of what the student's needs are, um, which helps us in programming if they qualify for special ed services or not. One of those three was on the waiting list already, and now it's been plugged in. And also wanted, she also wanted to update you of where the kids are, childhood in case you had or asked. So breakdown of residents, you can see, uh, we have eleven from the Brainerd area, which is eighteen percent, two, one from Little Falls. Pillager was fifty-four percent, Staples twenty-three percent, Wadena three percent. So that's where the kids are coming from for.
The fact that over half are, are students is more unusual than normal, and so I like it.
Just wanted to give you an update on that. Uh, any questions on that? So in case you get asked some information there. Homecoming week schedule, um, we do have homecoming week going on this week, and I know we posted on Facebook lots of the activities that we have coming up this week. I was going to print that out for you, Dave, but our printer went down, and then I forgot. So it is on our Facebook page, so a nice little brochure that Tiffany built on our Facebook with every day of what's activity, so it's really a nice little handout, so you can look on that if you're interested in what's going on this week. Um, lots of different things going on.
The grade is really at one-ten, just saw that today. Was like at two, what time do they grade?
One-ten.
It really is one-ten. Dang. Wow. Not what I've locked around today. I changed it based on a previous thing I saw.
They're doing a pep fest or something, which it works, which they don't always do.
So one-ten.
One-ten is the grade, yep. Um, staff development committee, uh, we are doing some work, uh, with that committee. We're starting to plan, I hate to say this already, but we're already starting to plan for next year. Uh, so far, we've got to kind of be in advance of different things on our calendar. Uh, some of the things that we've talked about, that we will be meeting with them, is how do we take advantage of the Sourcewell Summit and have more staff attend, because it really is a, a great, uh, workshop with nationally known speakers, and it's right in our backyard. We get anywhere from twenty to twenty-five teachers every year, but it'd be a way that maybe we can get more of them to come by changing days out and having them go to that versus, uh, something else during the school year. So we're going to talk about that. Then also, uh, building in some assessment days for our new kindergarten students, and giving some time for the teachers to work with those, a lot of districts do that. Um, and then the other piece of that would be, uh, like we do our fifth grade, it has a separate open house, which is very nice for fifth grade, because it just, I know our teachers like that, and I know a lot of fifth grade students have that fear of coming into middle school. Um, we talked about maybe doing something separate with kindergarten as well on a separate night, uh, which would ease a lot of, some of that fear.
School readiness is that tool.
Yep, they do a different night. So we're, we're doing some conversations about that and how that works, and how we could possibly change some things, and still try to get out before Memorial Day. So, some people would like, so.
Yes, I, I've actually heard comments already again this year, I'm like, I don't know.
Well, there's things that come into play, you know, and lots of different things, and we won't have the band and choir trip next year, hopefully. We've been trying to have that for three years.
I was going to say, they have that scheduled in this year?
Yep, the two days in March. Two days built in March, yeah. Um, I'd like to just offer once again our condolences to Chad and Deanna Danielson on the loss of their daughter Laney. I'd also like to recognize the work that our staff and volleyball coaches and the crisis team did over the last few weeks to help our students and staff through that situation. It was, uh, obviously a terrible situation, but I hats off to, uh, our, our people to be there for people and get through the, the time. And, uh, also I'd like to recognize our football team, our coaching staff, and their effort that they did this last Friday, uh, with the loss of West Central's team member that they had in a car accident. Uh, I was very proud of the sportsmanship and the efforts that they did before and after